Didn't realize I was chairing the Committee of the Whole Meeting for this Monday, November 7th. But I think we're ready to get started. So will the City Clerk call the roll, please?
Honorable James Cowie.
Here.
Alderman Novit.
Here.
Alderman Waldeck.
Here.
Alderman Moore.
Here.
Alderman Pendeleon.
Here.
Alderman Marsh, absent. Alderman Schoenhyder.
Here.
Alderman Palmer. Yes, yes. Oh, I'm sorry. Alderman Edelman.
Here.
Eight present, one absent. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Okay. The second item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the October 3rd meeting of the Committee of the Whole.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? So, done. Item three is Retail and Real Estate Development Update. I'll give you a little backdrop on that. I happen to be the council liaise person to the Downtown Committee. And as a backdrop, the Downtown Committee has its foundation or basis in a couple of Central Business District Task Forces that were mandated by prior mayors. There was a 2000 Task Force that studied the Central Business District, presented findings, there's a report, a written report. Some of you may remember that. I'm sure some members won't. Most recently, Mayor Rummel appointed a Central Business District Task Force in September of 2008 that existed for about four or five months. On that board were Otto Georgi, Mike O'Hanlon, who he was a commercial real estate expert or is, Jay Lovell, Tim Newman, who sits on our Plan Commission, Steve Alley, Bob Mears, Susan, is it Butcher, Boucher? Okay. And John Schreiber. I've got a background with the Plan Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals. The Central Business District is a little bit more removed from my particular area of expertise, so Susan Kelsey was good enough to provide me with the three-ring binder to get me up to speed. Susan Kelsey's our Economic Development Coordinator, and I don't want to talk about her presentation and steal her thunder, but the bottom line is the two task forces that were put together in 2000 and 2009 had four bullet point strategies. They were to enhance the revenue streams to the city from our businesses, retail and otherwise, increase vitality in the business districts, potentially engage investment partners to promote business innovation, and market Lake Forest to attract and retain additional business. That having been said, I turn tonight's presentation over to Susan Kelsey to give you all the details of 2011 and the future.
Good evening. I'm delighted to present this evening our Economic Development Update. Tonight we'll talk about, we'll give you just a quick review of our sales tax revenue at the City of Lake Forest, talk about some exciting new businesses that have opened or will open by the end of the year, talk about some special events, the new initiatives that the Task Force asked us to move forward on, and wrap it up with a list of the 2011 holiday activities. The bar graph in front of you is a 10-year review of the sales tax. There's two types of sales tax that comes to Lake Forest. One is the retail sales tax that comes through the retail stores. The second is a direct sales tax that comes from corporations, manufacturers, industry, most of them are located out at Conway Office Park. You can see from the trend line that by the end of 2007, that was Lake Forest's best year yet, close to, I think, just over $3 million of sales tax revenue. Then our recession hit in 2008, 2009, it started heading south. 2010, it is lower, however, there is some good news. The blue section of the bar graph represents the retail sales tax. So 2010's retail sales tax was over, above, it was about a 3.5% increase over 2009. So, and that kind of fits anecdotally with what we're hearing from our retail businesses too, that they felt like last year was a better year. The red portion of the bar graph is the direct sales tax, and that has been decreasing 24% actually the last year. So what we're doing to address that is we will be meeting with all the businesses out at the Conway Office Park and doing a business retention survey, meeting with all them, identifying what products are they selling, what are their plans for the future, what will they not be selling, and try to get a better handle on some of that flexibility. We have first and second quarter results in for 2011. The first quarter, the retail sales tax was down, second quarter was up 3.3%. That also fits anecdotally with what the businesses have been telling us. Again, on the direct sales tax side, there was, the first quarter, there was an increase in the direct sales tax, but second quarter, a 17.1% decrease. So again, we will be addressing that in the business retention survey. Net new businesses over the last five years, you can see where 2007 was. We brought in four businesses and we lost one. And then during the recession, 2008, 2009, we kind of held our own with about the same level of businesses coming in and leaving. And then in 2010, and particularly in 2011, we've really started to, some of the efforts have been paying off. And this year, we're proud to say that we've got nine new businesses in and we only lost one. And what are those new businesses? Well, in the restaurant and retail category, we have Caribou Coffee. They opened up. Mayor Cowie was over there. At the grand opening about two weeks ago, they're located on Western Avenue, just south of Deer Path. Lake Geneva Pie Company will be opening down next to John Luby at the Lake Forest Flowers. Grand Crew Wine Store will be opening up on the west side of Lake Forest, near Roback's and Lou Malnati's Pizza, that plaza over there. Joseph A. Bank Men's Clothes will be opening up right next door here at the Blockbuster. In fitness and beauty, we've got a new exercise studio, the Daily Method Nail Salon just opened up last week, UB Nail Salon, down at the former Hanukkah location. And then interior design and real estate at Properties is now in Lake Forest. And then Megan Winters is an interior design store and a retail store, and she's opening up right here on Forest Avenue. A beautiful store, and I recommend you go and visit. We have a number of other discussions going on with other businesses, restaurants, gift stores, and we'll continue those. As Alderman Edelman was suggesting, the Task Force asked that we put together more special events. We held the Farmer's Market for the first time last year. There was 16 Saturdays, and the farmers estimated there was just over 11,000 attendees for the entire summer. We found some methodology to evaluate that economic impact on the city, and it was about $447,000 in terms of the economic impact. So we know that people came and shopped, we knew about, on average, they spent about $20. We estimated that about 4.9% of them would go over, 24.9% would go over to Market Square, do some additional shopping. And then there's a multiplier of 1.6. And the total Farmer's Market only cost $1,800 to put on. So we look forward to it for next year. Northwestern Lake Forest Hospital will be a sponsor next year, and we look forward to expanding what we did this year. Couple of other special events that were successful, the Taste of Lake Forest was done in conjunction with the Heritage Festival. We had 10 restaurants participate. 100% of them loved the event. All of them made money at the event. 100% of them said that they would like to do it again next year. So we're trying to find other organizations that we can link up with and host another taste. Steve Valenti with All Things Party, for the second year in a row, hosted the Halloween Pumpkin Patch. Last year, he had about 600 attendees. This year, he had estimated about 1,300 attendees, bringing again feet into the Market Square. We have some new initiatives that we're ready to launch in the next 10 days. One is the Live, Work, Play Campaign for Lake Forest. This is something we'll be working on with property owners, local businesses, the Chamber of Commerce, and really focusing on the wonderful quality of life in Lake Forest. It's an asset-based campaign where we're focusing on how wonderful it is to live in Lake Forest, to work here in Lake Forest, and play in Lake Forest. The technical piece of this is a new iPhone app. And the new iPhone app will be able to download on November 18th from the iTunes Store. Then there will be an Android and a BlackBerry version, December 3rd, ready to download. So basically, when you open up the app, you have three choices. One is live, and it will lead you to every single real estate agency in Lake Forest, their mobile website, their website. It'll lead you to all the schools, banks, Lake Forest College. And the second option is to work in Lake Forest. It leads you to all the career pages at all the corporation websites, jobs at the City of Lake Forest, jobs at the hospital, jobs at the Lake Forest College. And then the third option people will have is to play in Lake Forest. And this is where we have all the things that you can do in Lake Forest. And for play, it's all the events, so that's tied directly to the Chamber of Commerce's event website. There's shopping, there's food, and as you can see from here, every single business in the City of Lake Forest will have a listing on this for free. And for example, this is the Grill. So you can click on the Grill's listing. You can find them on a map, they give you directions to their business. You can call them, you can visit their website. If they're offering any discounts, you can get their discount, use your Google Wallet and get immediate results. And the beauty about all this is it's pulled together with social media. So everybody that gets a deal at the Grill can instantly put it on Facebook and say, you know, "Come on and get your deal at the Grill too." Wrapping up, here's our lineup of holiday events. It kicks off on Friday, November 25th, with a traditional tree lighting ceremony. Starts about 3:30 with ice carving, Santa, and the singing, and the official tree lighting. On November 26th is a new holiday, we'll celebrate, a new program we're celebrating here called Small Business Saturday. A lot of the local merchants will have specials on that day, Saturday. And starting that Saturday, and every Saturday through December, will be Santa Claus in the square from 11 to 3. He'll bring his reindeer and his elves on Saturday, December 10th. And a new program we're doing this year, thanks to the City Manager and the Police Chief, is we're offering a key to the city. It's a new program where we're offering free customer parking. So stores that want to participate can give permits out to their customers that we've coordinated with them, and they can park in the city, enjoy a meal, go shopping, get their nails done, and all enjoy City of Lake Forest during the holidays. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Yes, there's actually a couple of questions, and not that we're trying to fill time, but maybe we are to a certain degree. First, with the Farmer's Market this year, I appreciate all your efforts. I saw you out there early in the mornings, setting up, getting things ready, and it was a great initiative. I think there'll be continued success after the seeds are planted this year. Even though I think I consumed about one quarter of the budget in pie during the year, next year will be great, and I'm looking forward to it. But there was a recent City Committee meeting that I watched, and there was discussion of signage for businesses in Lake Forest. And Joseph A. Banks came forward with approval of the signs that they were hoping to put in at their store. And to a certain degree, I was surprised, not surprised, by their fairly restrictive ordinance that Lake Forest has as far as illumination of signs in the business district. And at first glance, I was thinking it's in the character of Lake Forest to not have any illumination, excepting for Walgreens, which I think was grandfathered in. But as you drive around the business district, and getting off the train today and walking over to City Council meeting, it's difficult. If you run a business in this town, if you're from the town, you know where you're going. You know where the stores are located. But if you're from outside the town, it's very difficult. You don't glance over and you can't say, "Oh, there's Kittles," or "I might stop, I need shoes." You can't look around the town and actually see where the businesses are located. Has there been any initiative at all to maybe have passive lighting to help identify businesses, to help customers get to where they're going? And also just to increase the vibrancy of the business district, where it's beautiful? And Market Square in the downtown areas are beautiful areas in historic in nature. I think we could tastefully work an ordinance that illuminates at least the businesses so there's a look of vibrancy instead of a look of just complete dead space. And that's the message I'm getting. We don't want to do business, we're not welcoming you. Maybe some type of ordinance allowing illumination would make it a bit more welcoming for people to shop in Lake Forest. Long and short.
Sure, we can take a look at that. I can work with Kathy on that. Kathy Cerniak at Community Development has been fast-tracking all of these new businesses through. And we know, you know, we've been working with Caribou on lighting, we're happy to work with Joseph A. Bank on lighting. And we also, in addition, this doesn't address the lighting issue, but we do have some new signage that will be installed in the Central Business District area, working with Diane Malakar, the architect, for very beautiful and tasteful signage to help people navigate around the city.
Yeah, because, you know, for instance, if I want to go to Left Bank for a hot dog, I can't find it.
Right.
And it would be very helpful.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thanks.
Good point, thank you. Any other questions? From the public? I'd just like to add a couple comments of my own. We've met two or three times since I took office in May and was appointed to this commission. Our committee consists of Susan, myself, Kathy Cerniak, and Bob Kylie. And if any of you have a special interest in contributing to our endeavors, I welcome your participation. And for that matter, I reach out to the residents. If anybody's got an interest in giving input to the Downtown Committee, I heartily encourage you to try and get involved in the process. We welcome all the input that we can get.
I do have one observation. I was involved four or five years ago in a kind of a two-meeting little ad hoc committee that I think Bob Kylie asked me to participate in, and it was members of the Chamber of Commerce, members of the Property Owners Group. And it was, the subject was, how do we keep the city thriving economically? How do we, how do we take an active role instead of being passive? And it was pretty clear that we had, the City, the Chamber was looking to the City, the property owners were looking to the Chamber, the businesses were looking to both. Nobody was taking responsibility for this. And I think the evidence in terms of new store openings and new business openings is pretty hard to argue that having somebody responsible for this, which I think was one of the outputs of that discussion, has made a huge difference. And I think you've done a great job of just providing some energy behind this effort and a focal point that we just didn't have before. We spent years listening to the different groups complaining about what the other guys weren't doing, and nobody was ever actually doing anything. So, or I shouldn't be that blunt, but there was nobody clearly responsible, and now there is, and it's working, and I think, I think that's great.
Thanks.
Well, I would to pick up on Alderman Pendeleon's comments, because I think it should be noted for the record that, you know, Susan will go down to the ICSC conference, and she'll come back with 100, 150 leads. She feeds those leads to then the property owners. And it really then unfortunately is up to the property owners to run with those or not. And I know she worked very hard just to get these seven or nine involved here in the community. But I think, you know, people need to understand that it is a business relationship, and while we would love to have every one of these spaces filled up, ultimately it comes down to the property owner being willing to strike a deal and rent that space out to whatever that business is. Because we have to also accept the fact that we have limitations here in Lake Forest. We have limited foot traffic in relation to an Evanston or Vernon Hills, or whatever the case might be. And therefore, we have to accommodate the business model that they are bringing with them. I think we also have to recognize that there is going to be natural attrition in our business community. Some people are going to be here and some are not. So the key really is to try and, and I know Susan's been working really hard on this, is constantly trying to find businesses that have a good business model that will work in Lake Forest, that want to be in Lake Forest, and most importantly, that Lake Forest will support. And she has done a wonderful job, and, you know, we're trying to push the message that the glass is half-full, not half-empty. We're a lot better off than many other ones there. Do we have some vacancies we'd like to fill? Absolutely. But we're not nearly as bad off as some out there.
And if I can follow up on that, and Susan, you're going to get some more kudos here. So, you know, when you look at the statistics, the statistics do speak well of getting new business in town, and you've got eight net new businesses. But what it speaks well of is your ability to work with the businesses that are here. When we've only lost one new business, or one business in the community, in the retail area, that's an extraordinary testament to what you've done and the relationship you've built, and how hard you work to keep those businesses going and support them. And things like the Farmer's Market, as you mentioned, you get 24% of the people who come to the Farmer's Market and go to Market Square and continue to shop. Those are the kinds of things that it's hard to quantify, I'm glad you did, but the work, it's never fancy or very attractive, and doesn't get a lot of attention when you keep the business. You always get the marks on the other side when you win them, and you certainly get the downside when you lose them. But I think just your record of being able to help retain businesses in town is extraordinary, and I really applaud you for that.
Thank you.
I would like to add one more thing, and that is, the most important emphasis of the 2009 Task Force, if you drew anything from their report, if nothing else, was be proactive. We have to be proactive. And Susan Kelsey's been our proactive person, and like you said, it provides results, good positive results. Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments on Agenda Item 3? Agenda Item Number 4 is Other Items. Well, I didn't realize I was going to be chairing this tonight. Does anybody have any other items besides myself? Because I have another. Okay. Here's, well, I have another item that I'm going to present.
We can draw into the regular agenda and get some of the things, like cell phones.
Other items. Came to me last night while I was in the backyard with my dog, wind blowing the clouds, over the moon, uncovering the moon, and I got a little sentimental. So I jotted down some notes. And I'm going to read them to you because I didn't want to miss anything.
Mike, we only have half an hour.
With Thanksgiving rapidly approaching, I paused to reflect on this past year, how I came to occupy this seat, and I jotted down some notes, which I'd like to share tonight, if you don't mind indulging me, for about three minutes, maybe four. Tonight marks my six-month anniversary. This is Alderman Edelman. Prior to the City Council, I served on the Plan Commission and the Zoning Board of Appeals simultaneously. I was the Plan Commission Liaison to the ZBA. So for approximately five years, I served in a dual role on two boards. There were two public hearings a month, and the requisite preparation and reading that comes with those jobs. Just about this past May, I succeeded John Luby as a fourth ward alderman, so here I am. I have to admit, the time required for City Council is far greater than what was required to simultaneously serve on two boards previously. Besides twice-a-month meetings, there are various committees we all serve on, Town Hall meetings, numerous special events, and even reviewing video replay of boards when appropriate. For example, tonight we have Bara College in Old Main on the agenda. I spent nearly three hours this past weekend reviewing those videos from the HPC and our Committee of the Whole meeting last month. In the short time I've been an alderman, I have learned a tremendous amount about municipal government, and specifically about Lake Forest and our incredibly devoted employees. And I mean devoted across all rank and file. I feel privileged to be a part of the process which endeavors to maintain our community's high level of excellence, and to strive to even improve it and raise the bar higher, if that is even possible. I believe we all, and by all I mean staff, council, boards, 20,000-plus residents, we all ultimately have the best interests of the community at heart, and all of the deliberation and work which takes place in these chambers and staff offices. Bob Kylie and Kathy Cerniak in particular, those two are so incredibly devoted to their jobs, which I feel they perform with the utmost integrity. Vic Philippini, our city attorney, he always explains issues so that both the lawyers, there are four of us on this, and non-lawyers on City Council and in the public audience can best comprehend the nuances and intricacies of the process. When it comes to various community issues, there are always going to be those constituents who are for and those who are against. I truly respect the viewpoints of both sides, and I welcome the public debate and deliberation as a learning process for me as well as for the entire participating public. For each issue which comes before us, major or minor, administrative in nature, or of major public controversy, there is never a done deal in my mind. Every issue is open to full consideration and deliberation prior to reaching a decision. No matter how skeptical some of the public may feel about that, and I hear it frequently, those skeptics are simply wrong, it's just not the case. There are no done deals. The night of our Town Hall meeting last month, while scanning the many diverse people in the audience, I thought to myself, "Holy cow, what a fantastic community I'm so privileged to be a part of." We all are, and we should never lose sight of that. Lake Forest is so rich in its long heritage, which spans so many different facets of life and community, and perhaps sometimes we take that for granted. We shouldn't. We are all truly blessed to be passing through Lake Forest, and perhaps we need to remind ourselves of that periodically. I said I'd try to be brief, so in closing, I want to express my gratitude. First, I'm truly thankful for the opportunity to contribute my small role in what will become a part of Lake Forest's history. Next, I'm thankful for my fellow councilmen, for whom I now have a heightened appreciation for the time and commitment you each make. It's a privilege to work beside each and every one of you. And Mr. Mayor, I can't even begin to grasp how much more time you must be devoting than each of the eight of us as councilmen, so I thank you. Next, I give my utmost thanks and gratitude to all 200-plus employees serving this community and helping it to achieve the high level of excellence, which we all are so privileged to enjoy day to day. And finally, my thanks to the residents of Lake Forest for being good friends and neighbors, and especially to those of you who actively participate in and give input to our various public hearings, which provokes thought and provides insight to the issues we consider. It truly improves the process. And if I'm overly sentimental, I'll blame it on the moon, and I thank you for indulging me.
That was a great response. Wonderful.
Anybody else with other items?
We could go to some of the items on our main agenda and try to get them out of the way. I was thinking of the cellphone hands-free ordinance, which is part of the legal committee report. I wonder, Vic, can you talk about that?
I'd be happy to, Alderman Palmer. On last Wednesday, the legal committee did meet and reviewed, I'm sorry, was it the last Wednesday? Yeah, it's the last Wednesday.
Yes.
Reviewed a number of items, one of which came up in other business there relating to the hands-free cellphone ordinance. There are a number of different standards in place today. There are two state law standards regarding the hands-free, all of which we're probably familiar. One relates to school zones, the other one relates to construction zones. In both of those instances, the state law has identified a series of activities and devices that cannot be used in those areas, and there are penalties, including substantial fines, for violating those. In each of them, there are exceptions with respect to hands-free devices. That would be your so-called Bluetooth, your, you know, in-panel speaker system in the car. In addition to those state laws, there are a number of local ordinances that have been adopted that have extended the hands-free regulations beyond just those two areas, the schools and the construction zones. In your packet on page 8, I believe, you'll see that there is a map that identifies several communities that have actually adopted or are considering adopting regulations that are or are considering adopting regulations that are broader than the state law. Again, in most of those that I'm familiar with, and I think I'm familiar with three of, of the ones listed, they have, for the most part, taken the state law and just extended the area of applicability. Instead of just being in the construction zone or the school zones, it's extended it throughout the community. There was general support on behalf of the legal committee to have the city consider this further. Obviously, it's a policy question. But from, from the legal committee's perspective, they thought it was a matter warranting your consideration. And I guess that's the summary of the report. I don't know if there's anything else.
We'll take that up at the regular meeting. Anything else we can get out of the way before Mike doesn't otherwise speak?
Do you want to do the Shell oil?
There is one item. It's at the end of our regular city council agenda. It's the material that starts on page 103. The, within the United States, as well as the state of Illinois, in order to address some of the releases that have occurred from time to time from underground storage tanks, the Environmental Protection Agency has established what's known as tiered response to, to some of those releases. And it allows, rather than a, a full-scale cleanup, a less expensive, but what is viewed to be equally safe, way of addressing those releases. With respect to the gas stations in Lake Forest, I believe all of them at one point or other have been found to have releases. And in each instance, the, the city has entered into what's called a highway authorization agreement. And in connection with it, there's a, really a two-pronged response to it. One is that ground wells could not be used for potable water within the area impacted by the, by the release. And two is that it's ordinarily an area that is going to have some cover on it, such as the pavement, and that serves as what's known as an engineered barrier. We have such an agreement already with the Shell station. The IEP has identified a slightly broader area. And what's before you tonight is a further highway authorization agreement and a supplemental agreement, which are presented to you for approval pursuant to a resolution. And then an ordinance which would create the groundwater limitation for the area identified on the map, which is, I believe, at page 130 in your packet. I'm sorry, 103 in your packet. This is something that is, I would say, pretty standard. Nevertheless, it is something that does require council action, and that's why it's brought before you tonight. If there are any questions, I'll be happy to try to answer them.
I have one, one question. It includes more than the Shell station property that's owned by the Shell station?
Right. If you look at the map, you'll see that the area impacted is slightly beyond the boundaries of that property itself. And that's really to protect against possible migration underground of any of the, the release.
Does this thing come to the property next door, limit its saleability, reduce its value?
I won't speculate as to what it does in terms of value. The, the limitation that's shown on the map is really just in terms of whether or not a groundwater well for a potable water service could be used within that area. I, I don't know that there's been any confirmation that the plume of, excuse me, the plume of the, the released, what do I want to say, gas products, I'm, stuff, thank you. It's good to know that we have, we have expert testimony with us tonight. I, I don't know whether there, there's been a specific identification of it going beyond the, the property and maybe its immediate environs. But as a matter of, of safety, the identification of the area for the groundwater limitations is usually broader than that, just to avoid any possibility of a problem.
I'm, I'm only concerned that if we pass this completely reasonable thing later on in the, in the city council meeting, would we be in effect, affecting a property owner that's not present or maybe not even notified? I don't know how this works.
Well, I, I should note, and I, I think it was actually in the write-up, the--
I just want to be aware of it.
Yeah, the, the city's current regulations prohibits the use of groundwater wells for potable water service unless specifically approved by the city manager. So in this instance, we're really not doing anything in terms of our basic policy. But for purposes of ensuring that the, the compliance with the IEP requirements is being achieved through Shell, this ordinance specifically has to be adopted. And again, for the, although the city is--
So we're only limiting something that can't be done anyway?
That's correct, under our current policies. And I should note that although the city is doing something here, the agreements in, that will ultimately be signed will make sure that Shell is backing us up in terms of anything that comes up in connection with it.
And Vic, just general question. Got about five minutes to talk, but I'll try not to fill that. But--
Why, so I'm supposed to?
Well, it's always a pleasure. But does the city require maybe periodic soil board tests? How did we even become aware that there was a, a plume in the area?
The, the IEP actually has monitoring wells, and that's how it was identified. Well, I, I should take a couple steps back. All underground storage tanks have to be reported to the state fire marshal. There are requirements for examination of those tanks. I, I understand, and I don't have all of the details, but I understand that there was found to be some release from the underground storage tanks at the Shell property. I believe that there are monitoring wells in or around that property to determine whether or not there's been any kind of migration of, of the released materials. And there was, as I mentioned earlier, a prior highway authorization agreement for that property. The monitoring wells apparently identified some broader plume than was originally anticipated, and that's why this is coming back to the council for a further agreement.
Okay.
I don't know if I filled enough time, but--
Yeah, no, and follow-up question is just, as far as the Tier 1, what would cause that? Is there any unusual circumstance, or just operating a gas station in the area with the runoff caused potentially a plume like this?
Again, this is, I think, pretty commonplace in terms of gas stations, particularly if they've been in place for any length of time. I don't think that the environmental awareness and sensitivity existed at the times. Early on, many of the tanks were not of the same composition as are now required, and as a result, you did have some, some leaking. It can, it could also be not necessarily from the tank itself. It could be from the spout when they're filling it. So any number of different sources. But as, as we all know, even from the, the dispensing mechanisms, they now have different cups on the, on the hoses and the like. So there, there have been some enhancements in terms of the overall requirements for service stations, but not always the case. And some of these releases relate to, to tanks that might have been there, you know, 30, 20, you know, 20, 30 more years ago.
Yeah, and there'll be further monitoring, of course. Okay.
Any other items? I don't know if you noticed in your packets the memorandum from Aaron Staley on the revenues from the Telegraph Road train station. Real nice memorandum. Thank you very much.
Move to adjourn.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
What do you want to say, Eric?
We should reconvene around 7:30.